Good evening. Call to order, the special meeting of the Board of Education for May 4th, 2022. Will everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few housekeeping notes. Our student board representative, Omer, is not here this evening as it is a special meeting. And unfortunately, Mr. Anderson may not be able to make it this evening, so he will not be in attendance. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we will open up our public speaking for the budget, which we are limiting to three minutes to each speaker as we typically have. And the comments are restricted, please, to speaking on the budget only.
Prior to starting that process, both Mr. Cahill and I felt like we should do a brief overview again. I know that the last time we did the presentations for the viewers at home, they couldn't see the screen, and so we wanted to do a very, very, we promise it's going to be quick.
I'm sorry, I thought you were doing it after the comments.
No, no, we're going to do it before so that then when anyone gets up, they, we've done the presentation. So we'll begin, we just need that camera to be on. No, no, the camera. The TV, sorry. The TV, I can't see the TV. I used to have eyes in the back of the head when I was a teacher. And somehow I lost them now that I'm the superintendent. They come out every once in a while.
Yeah, exactly.
It's coming, it's, there we go. Is that the first slide?
It is, yes.
Okay, so I, so we've done multiple presentations yesterday. The cabinet and I did a crusader chat and answered as many questions as we received and did a very small presentation. It was 30 minutes. I know it was long, but there were many things that we wanted to share. We wanted to also have the community understand our thinking behind this budget. So what you're looking at right is what we call our budget priorities for 2022, 2023. I begin by talking about preserving existing instructional staff. Yesterday, I mentioned that even though the enrollment in the district is decreasing, we also realize that we have other, our students have other needs. And so that we're able to take instructional staff that may have been in a classroom and then use that to support the needs of our students. I also spoke a little bit about creating new administrative and instructional positions to support students and staff and improve school environment. And that was really talking about the position for the, another assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. As I spoke before, we are going to be focused on teaching and learning. And it's very important to have, I think I said another Eric on the, on the, on the video. But I did, I said I need two Eric's, if that's possible. So it's important to have two people who are going to shepherd the work. And there's a lot of work ahead for us. For example, one of the things that we're going to be looking at, at the middle school and the high school, is really looking at the way that we, we have our schedules. One of the things that we realized this past, these past two years is that our students switch nine periods a day. And sometimes that constant switching creates other issues for us. Putting students into the building, into the hallway, moving back and forth. And so that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at. As well as both the board and the cabinet, we've, part of our goal is to really look at the data and make decisions based on the data of the students so that we can make really short-term plans and long-term plans. So that's why we, I felt, and the cabinet and I felt, and the board, that this is an important position. The other piece was maintaining class size to maximize learning outcomes. We've been fortunate in the last couple of years, especially K-5. Our class size has been low. There are certain, certain grade levels that have higher, a larger number of students. But what we're looking at is having some sort of a number that we believe is the optimum way of have, of teaching students. So maximizing class size is important for that. The next is providing high school students with more electives. That came from the fact that our high school students have, and we have some high school students here with us today, that we don't have enough electives. And so what happens is that our students are forced to go into study halls. And what we really wanted to do was to have courses that we felt our kids were really excited about. So we, we are now adding two new sections, two new classes, one in business and one in technology. And the other one is offering more opportunities to our students during the summer. We will once again have summer bridges. And if you see the asterisk there, it's because the money that's being used for that is ARPA money. So we had that program last year, we have it this year, and if the money continues to come, we'll have it the following year. And lastly, is sustain our commitment to early intervention by expanding our pre-K program and adding an additional site. And we've been very fortunate that Kids Corner, we put out an RFP. They're going to be another one of our partners. And I believe, Eric, do you know how many students we'll have?
I, the RFP, sorry. The RFP originally that they submitted was 24, and we're still fine tuning that exact number because obviously, similar to Little Pals last year, they had, you know, a certain number of seats of families that were already registered for the program and everything else. So it's going to be at least 24 to be added to the 74 that we had last year. So minimum of 98, but we're actually shooting for over 100, I think, in the end, as we continue to.
And I was fortunate to run into a parent whose child is currently in our pre-K program. And they were raving about the classes and how much the child has learned and what a great environment it is. And so that has another asterisk next to it. But it really is, we're using our ARPA funds, but we've made a commitment to this program. So when the ARPA funds are no longer available to us, we are going to put this in the general budget. And I think Mr. Israti may have asked at the last board, board meeting, or a couple of board meetings, so how much is the district putting in? So we get 60% of it is funded by the state and 40% is paid by the district. So it's a 60-40 split. So it is, it is a considerable amount of money that the district is putting into this program or committing to this program. But the goal is to really commit to it even after the funding has, is no longer available to us. Next slide. Patrick, you just don't have it.
Need a new, new clicker here. Thank you, Prudence. Okay, so I just want to talk a little bit about some of the factors that are impacting next year's budget. We've touched on this in the past, and I typically like to talk about the cost drivers in a budget. Every year, it seems like it's something different is happening, something unique. The law changes, aid formulas change. So really, for this year's budget, when I talk about the budget, I'm talking about the appropriation side of the budget. We talk about revenue, how we fund things. And appropriations is the expense side of the budget, the budget, the cost side. So there's really three areas, three major categories that are really driving the costs in this budget. And the first is transportation, and more specifically, contract transportation. I had a meeting with the bus drivers last week, and we talked about transportation. They said, hey, can you highlight the fact that it's, it's really, it's not the staffing that's changing? It's not the, you know, the internal component of transportation? It's really the contract transportation piece of the transportation budget that's really going up and driving that 32% departmental increase. And so the contract transportation is higher because we've used more contractors. We've used contractors for added district runs. We've also, we're now using contracts, contractors for non-public school. So we have residents that are residents of this school district. They attend non-public schools up to 15 miles from their home. And as the public school district, we're obligated to provide transportation to them. It's something they're entitled to. So we've seen an increase in that area, the enrollment for contract transportation. And we've also seen the cost of contract transportation increase. So I talked about general inflation in the economy, that's driving that higher. So we're seeing that impact in the current year. And we anticipate we're going to see, you know, general inflation and higher contract transportation, the price of that, the cost of that increase or stay high next year as well. Now, the one thing I would say about that is we used new contractors this year for some of that non-public work. And we had all the non-public students register in the district. So it was kind of a, I think in some ways, a one-time spike. And I anticipate that will not increase at this same rate in future years. I think there will be some increases, but not like this increase for, for next year in that area. The other big increase was health insurance. So that's sort of a major category. We, we talk about health services inflation. Internationally, it runs seven or eight percent. And unfortunately for us, that's approximately the increase in our premiums for next year, seven or eight percent through the OU Health Plan. So it's a consortium of school districts we're a part of. So one might ask, why is the health insurance overall budget-to-budget increase like 14%? Because there's some other factors that go into that. So one is enrollment. So your premiums may be increasing seven or eight percent, but we're also enrolling more employees for next year. There was also some changes to the, the categories, premium categories, which made that number higher as well. And then finally, the district reimburses retirees for their portion of Medicare. So, so we encourage, and the Health Plan does this as well, retirees that are Medicare eligible, so that's Medicare would be their primary health insurance, and our insurance is secondary. And so to incentivize them to enroll in Medicare, there's a portion of that premium that they're responsible for. We reimburse them for that. And so we saw a big increase, or we'll be looking at a big increase for next year in that as well. It's somewhere around $700,000 just for that reimbursement of retirees. So there's a multitude of factors which drove the health insurance component of the budget higher. And then finally, the teacher retirement system is the retirement system for certificated staff. You know, it's the teachers, administrators, et cetera. And so it's our, we make contributions both to TRS and ERS. So we're looking at an 11% increase in TRS next year, it's about $800,000. The TRS rate increased from 9.8% to 10.3%. And, you know, we're a big district, we have a lot of teachers and instructional staff. So that amounted to almost an $800,000 increase in that line as well. Prudence, next slide? Thank you.
So that was, I kind of alluded to that in the beginning of this, of the presentation, which is our focus is on teaching and learning. So I think we can go to the next slide. And I talked specifically about the administrative position. I've already spoken about the assistant superintendent, two deans at the middle, one for the middle school and one for the high school. We have been experiencing behaviors that we haven't seen in our buildings. And so we felt that it was our due diligence to have a dean at the high school and a dean at the middle school. This is part of our continuing commitment to having a safe environment for both our staff and our students. Prior to that, we had elected to hire SROs, officers in every building. And we just hired seven new safety officers. And so we felt that having a dean in the building would also free up some of our administrators to be able to go into the classroom and again, assist our teachers and really focus the attention on our primary focus, which is teaching and learning. I have there as well, the director of guidance. So that position has an asterisk, which means that we are going to initially fund that through our ARPA funds. A director of guidance is going to help us shepherd and make changes at, through our, in our guidance departments. But most importantly is that we believe that in the coming years, we're going to need to have, it'll be a requirement for us to have guidance counselors or counselors at the elementary level. So this person will be responsible for creating the plan for this implementation as well. And then, of course, I spoke about our two high school teachers in both the business and the technology department.
Okay, so I just want to take a minute and talk about the tax cap and the tax levy increase. So we've looked at this slide a few times now. What I just wanted to point out is the, the tax cap is a limit on the increase in the levy. It's a state law that was, I believe enacted in 2011. And it's a multi-step formula that we have to go through. And this is sometimes called the 2% tax cap because 2% is a factor, the allowable growth factor in the middle there. It's, it's the lesser of 2% or CPI, but they call this the 2% tax cap. Rarely is it exactly 2%. And in our case for next year, it's actually 2.51%. And what I wanted to point out here is we're proposing a levy increase below the cap, levy increase of 1.95%. So it's well below the cap. It's the third year in a row we've been able to levy taxes below the tax cap. And, you know, with that, I would just say, let's go to the next slide. And, you know, so this is sort of the superintendent's budget recommendation, the overview of the budget. So the total general fund budget is, proposed budget is $201,524,574, which is a 12.7 approximately million dollar increase or 6.76%. Now, that tends to be a relatively high increase budget-to-budget. You know, in our recent past, I know other districts in the region are similarly situated to us with this. We talked about the cost drivers. But the good news here, if I go down to the revenue budget, is that the proposed levy increase is, is below 2% at 1.95%. So how are we able to do that? Have a budget increase of, you know, 6.8%, but a levy increase below 2%? It's a few factors, which we'll get into in the revenue budget section down below here. The primary factor has to do with the non-property tax revenue. Let's see if I can do it. Nope, not showing up. Which is miscellaneous revenue and mostly state aid. So you notice the increase on that line is 16 and 1/4% approximately, or 9.7 million. So that had to do with the change or phase-in of foundation aid. So that's one of the principal aid formulas and one of the drop programs for the, for the district. This is something that the, the foundation aid formula, it's probably 12 or 14 years old at this point. It was never fully phased in. The formula was designed to be more equitable and more adequate for school districts. But basically, they came up with a new formula, the Great Recession occurred, and the state was never able to actually fully phase in this formula. So for this year, this is the first year they're able to do that. We've lobbied for years. And during our budget presentations in the past, I would put a slide up that would say, okay, if the, if foundation was, foundation aid was fully phased in, we'd have $8 million more. And I had a running tally. I know Mr. Israti used to, used to talk about that, you know, when we were over 90 million, I stopped doing it. But the good news is, this year, it's finally fully phased in. So we saw a bump in state aid for this year. We're going to have a bump for next year, and then the third year would be, the formula would be fully phased in. So, you know, that's one of the, the reasons that we're able to have a relatively low tax levy increase. The other thing we're doing for next year is appropriating reserves. So we're using our savings, our reserves, 200,000 from an employee benefit accrued liability reserve. And we're applying that as revenue to next year's budget to lower the tax levy. And then the final piece is the assignment of fund balance. So we have reserves, which are a form of fund balance, restricted. And then we have unassigned fund balance, which is sort of free and clear fund balance. We're restricted to 4% of unassigned fund balance. So we're proposing to assign, which just means apply it to next year's budget, 2.2 million in assigned fund balance. And that's an increase from the current year of 1.9 million. So that's the, the revenue budget and the proposal in a nutshell.
And then the, right, the last slide.
Right, so we also talk about the contingency budget and austerity budget. So this is New York State law. If, if the voters fail to pass the budget on two separate occasions, and this year's budget vote is May 17th, and the second budget vote is June 21st, the board and the district would adopt a contingency budget. So there's certain mandatory cuts that are required in a contingency or austerity budget. The, the main sort of cut or, or problem with it, or I won't say a problem, but the, the main restriction of it is the levy cannot increase. So the required levy reduction for, for us would be about 2.4, approximately 2.4 million dollars. So there's other mandatory cuts we'd have to make. Equipment within the budget would have to go. So we're, we're proposing to buy some new vehicles for buildings and grounds. There's some other equipment purchases that are planned that would all have to come out of the budget. There's certain raises for non-represented employees, that comes out of the budget. There's limitations on the use of district facilities where there's a cost involved. So we'd have to restrict next year the use of our facilities by community groups to some degree. And then finally, there's a, I don't want to get too technical, but there's a component where we have to classify the budget into administrative program, which means instructional or teaching and capital components. So capital is debt service, it's buildings and grounds. The program is the instructional component. Administration is the administrators and essentially everything else, less buildings and grounds. So what that limitation has to do with is the, the administrative percentage of the budget can't exceed the prior year. So there, there might be additional cuts in the administrative area we would have to make under a contingency budget. So it would be, I think, a relatively dramatic kind of analysis we'd have to go back to the drawing board on and, and look at all the new positions. We'd have to look at, you know, vacant positions through retirements and attrition and really analyze everything to, to primarily meet that 2.4 million dollar reduction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just a reminder, budget vote is Tuesday, May 17th at Central Valley from nine, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And it's very important that you go and exercise your right to vote. And now, if we have any speakers.
May I ask one follow-up question? Just from, from that, I apologize. It might have been on the previous one, but it just, your little asterisk made a note of it. For the guidance director position and the ARPA funds, is that, how, can you explain how that's coming from the state again with the ARPA funds as to how long that will be? Is that for three years?
That was for three years, starting last year. So it's last year, this year, and the following year.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, so moving on to the public hearing portion of the public speaking, we have three minutes assigned, and it is restricted this evening to just speaking on the budget. And we have one speaker this evening, Casey Capen.
Good evening, board members, central administration, and the modern Woodbury community. For those that do not know me, my name is Casey Capen. I'm a second grade teacher at Pine Tree, the executive vice president of the MWTA, and the mother of two MW students. On behalf of the MWTA, I wanted to express my appreciation to all my colleagues during Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to the PTAs across the district for the various special events that you've put together for our faculty and staff. Today is also School Nurse Appreciation Day. Thank you for all that you do for all our students. Our nurses are among some of the unsung heroes during the pandemic, and we are grateful for their efforts to keep our students and staff healthy during the difficult period. I am also here tonight in all those roles I mentioned above to encourage everyone to support the school budget. I appreciate the time and energy the cabinet has put into creating this budget. I'm sure it is a daunting task, given the difficulty in satisfying all of the priorities we believe are needed for our students. The proposed budget does maintain our existing programs and support students, which is vital in lights of the pandem, of the impacts of the pandemic on our students' academic and social emotional needs. It also makes a down payment on addressing the need to offer our high school students the electives of the future in business and technology. The budget also accomplishes these priorities while staying under the tax cap and that fiscal responsibility is appreciated. Moving forward, I ask that board members in the cabinet continue to take the time to listen to the concerns of teachers and staff. Who better to share with you what is needed than those that see firsthand what is happening in the classrooms? The needs we have now in the classroom are very different than what we had just a few years ago. We have to make a conscious decision to keep our class sizes small, and we appreciate the efforts to address class size. Now more than ever, teachers need to be able to build relationships with their students and support their academic and social emotional needs. To support a rigorous academic environment, we need additional staff in the core academic subject areas to offer students at the secondary level more electives rather than having them sit in a study hall or roam the halls. We should also address how late arrival and early dismissal has become institutionalized at the high school rather than having students take additional courses that could help them find their passion, keep them engaged in school, or obtain college credits. As a parent, a teacher, and a taxpayer, I want to see MW students be offered the best of the best. I want them to have high expectations for themselves and to have the support they need to reach those goals. Passing the budget is the first step in that direction. Sitting down together, listening to classroom teachers, clerical staff, and the support staff is a crucial next step. The members of the MWTA and EA who I am, who, whom I represent, believe that we can provide valuable input and are always willing to be a part of these conversations. Our professional expertise and years of experience, when given due consideration, helps us to achieve our common goal to support all of our students. Let's work together to give our students, our community, what they need, not just to get by, but to thrive. Please vote yes on May 17th.
Thank you. Next, I would like to get a motion to enter into the second public hearing that we have this evening, which is on the proposed expenditure from Repair Reserve Fund.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Could Lisa, you got it? Okay. May I also have a motion for the resolution of the proposed expenditure from the Repair Reserved Fund?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stacy, would you like me to review the Repair Reserve and the use of the Repair Reserve funding?
Yes, go ahead, perfect.
Great, because we had created this, this quick slide. I'll go through this fairly quickly. So I had a bullet about reserve funds. So reserve funds, we've talked a little bit about it, are basically like savings accounts that are available to districts to save, and they say, I have a bullet that says, legally saving money to finance. All are part of the cost of future infrastructure, equipment, and other requirements. So we have about eight reserve funds, there are others available. They're also available to municipalities. So the Repair Reserve is what we're specifically talking about in this hearing. And it's authorized under general municipal law to pay for certain repairs to capital improvements or equipment. And that's what we're referring to. Our Repair Reserve has approximately $77,000, 77,300 in it. It was established, I don't know exactly, I could have researched it, but it's at least as old as the 2007, '08 fiscal year. Because that's, that's the, as old as the financial statements that are available to me right at my desk go back. So we've had this for a while, this Repair Reserve. In terms of the repair, we're proposing to use this money for the plaster on the inside and the floor, the bottom of the middle school pool is cracking. I've sent some communications, communiques to the board about this, and essentially delaminating coming away from the substrate beneath. And the pool is basically out of service because of this problem. We've had this problem for a few weeks now. We've had a couple of vendors look at it. We're going to work with CPL, our new architect, to come up with a long-term solution to the problem. We're proposing to use this Repair Reserve for this, this repair. We think, we're not sure exactly how much this will cost. Certainly more than $35,000, which is the bid threshold. So the process would be, we come up with a solution with CPL. They put together bid specifications, we put a bid out. And then we try to do this during the summer, basically, when kids aren't in the building. There, there is some risk associated with it. Pool contractors this time of year are very booked up. So we have to have a lot of flexibility with them. It's almost one of those things where they're doing a lot of work outside. So if there's literally a period of bad weather, we can say, there's four days. Come to our building, we're going to open the building for you so they can, they can get this done. So there is some risk, there's some uncertainty, some variables that are out of our control. But we're going to move forward and, and try to have this done by, let's say, mid-August because the, I think the girls swim season starts.
Late August, I think.
Yep, so, so that's our, that's our game plan, and that would be how we're using this Repair Reserve. And a hearing is a requirement of, of the use of the reserve.
The funds?
Yep.
Okay, so it sounds like you're optimistic that it'll be open for August, but not until then.
That's the goal, right, that is the goal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Open for a rainy summer.
I, I know. Well, hopefully with the, with the weather, our swimmers that are in the districts can find another, another venue to swim at.
Or a contractor with a, you know, a gap in their dance card, right?
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
So now we have a hearing, right?
Oh, yes. If there's, but we don't have anybody to speak, I apologize.
Okay, we don't.
We technically are allowed to have it open now for speaking, but we do not have any speakers on the proposed Reserve Fund Balance, correct? Correct, okay. But I should make note of that, yes. We didn't have anybody that wanted to speak on it. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a textbook on the agenda this evening. I don't know if there's anything that you need to add, Dr. Hassler, for that?
No, it's just, we're asking for board approval of the forensic textbook that, the information I have up on board docs. It's a textbook to replace a book that was purchased in 2001 for our forensics program up at the high school. Yeah, it's been, the, the current book is over 20 years old. The funds that, the reason why we're approving it now is because we have leftover textbook funds available to us now that I can use that would be fully aidable for next year in state aid.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Matt for personnel?
Sure, thank you very much. So before I ask for approval for the items listed under personnel, I'd just like to point out a few things.
point out a, a few things. We have five retirements tonight. Pine Tree seems to be the, the big school. We've got three people from Pine Tree who are retiring. We have Betsy Hubert, who is an AIS math teacher. She began here as a teaching assistant many years ago. Eileen Freud, who's one of our teachers of students with disabilities, and Margaret Summers, who is one of our SNTs, our school nurse teachers at Pine Tree. In addition, we have Vicky Morales, who is a district-wide RN, and Denise Hoskins, who's one of the ELA teachers at the middle school. They have all been a force for good, and we appreciate all of their help, and thank you to them. I also just want to point out, there are two people under resignations. I don't usually get into all of the resignations, but I do want to just point them out. The first one is Akami Hunter, who is a secretary at Smith Clove. She is, if you've ever had the chance to call Smith Clove and have her answer the phone when you call, it is an absolute pleasure. She is somebody who is, she brings sunshine to that building, and she will be missed. She's moving out of state. And Sam Munzer, who's a recently appointed technology teacher, he has a unique opportunity to go back to his college alma mater and work there, so he's going to be taking that chance. So I want to say thank you to both of, well, all, all seven of them. And with that, I respectfully request approval for the items listed under Personnel.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick for Business and Financial?
Thank you. Yeah, I would also respectfully request the approval of the items listed under the Business/Financial section of the agenda, please.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to adopt the Committees on Special Education, Preschool and, Preschool Special Education, 11.1 to 11.4?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And before we officially adjourn, I do know that it was a quick meeting, and I didn't get the opportunity in the beginning to recognize the students, but it is a pleasure to have them back in the building. They come from our government classes and our history classes at the high school, and